And this is the last one on the Christmas stories. I am gonna try a class this next week that would look at what do we know about what happened to the apostles? And also, what was some of Jesus' strategies in developing them? And somebody had asked that, and so I thought, well, I'll just see what I can put together. But then we're done for a while. I'm in the process right now of thinking about January through May. So we'll see where that one goes. I do have a couple of thoughts, but I think it's a little premature on that. But yeah, so why don't we begin? And what I would like to do today is a couple of things. One is going to be to just talk a little bit about the Herod story and ask the question, "Why did Matthew include it?" It's certainly not the story that you tell in Christmas pageants. For very good reasons, actually. I think it probably feels about as brutal as you can get. Then to take a look at a really nice story, which is of Anna and Simeon, and to talk a little bit about the event that brought all of that together. And so, welcome. If you turn to Matthew, chapter 2, and what I'd like to do is say a few things about Herod. Because he is a really, really interesting guy. Not a nice guy, but a very interesting guy. And I think it says a lot about what it was like around Jesus' time in terms of all the different peoples that had populated the area. Like, one of the things that really shocked me when I was doing my... We visited Israel, and I didn't realize that seven miles from Nazareth was a small Greek city that had everything from a Greek bath to everything. And that means that in Galilee, you had lots of Jews, but you had lots of other peoples. And you had... They even talk about the decapolis, which were Greek cities. And so, Jesus actually... Sometimes we think of him as just in a backwater. Well, Nazareth was a backwater. But there would be all kinds of ideas that now, we're going around the world, that would be discussed through Greek language, that he'd be exposed to. So there was... Even though he came to the Jewish people, that was a very stimulating culture, and that surprised me. So anyway, Herod was an Arab. His two brothers were named Yoseph and Khalid. And he was born in Idumea, which is an area that is... That's where his father came from, his mother from a nearby area. He's the only person in his family that ended up having a Greek name. Otherwise, it was from Iraq. So racially, he is Arab. Religiously, he's Jewish. And the reason is because when the Maccabees had their revolt against the Greeks, there was a brief period where they were free. And one of their rulers, Hirtanis, conquered the area that Herod came from and forcibly converted all of the people to be Jews, which surprised me because I never thought the Jews ever did that. So Herod grew up a Jew in his religion. Culturally, he was a Greek. And he was sometimes accused of trying to make Jerusalem a Greek city. He was educated in Greek, and that would be his preferred language. And Greek at that time was the equivalent of English is today in the world. English is that for... Greek was culturally the language among the educated. And then, not so... Well, and maybe economically, I don't know. I suppose, because it crossed over, and that's because of Alexander the Great. Politically, he's Roman. And his grandfather had been made governor of this area. And so, he ended up having a seat of power. And he supported Antony and Cleopatra in the civil war. As you may remember, they lost. And it was Octavian that won, and he eventually became Augustus Caesar, the first Caesar that was worshipped as a god. And but, Herod was a very bright man. And what he did, he made an appointment, an audience with Octavian after the battle, went to him and told Octavian very clearly that he had been a supporter and a real good friend of Antony and Cleopatra. And then, his punchline was, "Don't evaluate me on the basis of who my friends were, but on how good a friend I was." And that swayed Octavian. And so, by the time he went back to the area of Israel, he was more securely in power than he was before. Physically, he was handsome as a young man and quite powerful. In terms of relationships, we see a little bit of... Not the best. He married ten women. He had lots of children, and his two favorite sons, who I imagine must have been the most able, he feared would be rivals to himself and had them strangled in one of the fortresses. He also thought that Mary Ann Me... Mary Ann Me... I may be right. His life that he loved the most was going to be disloyal, so he had her murdered. But he was then beginning to fail in his psychology and would call her name out and command his servants to go find her. And then, when they didn't find her, of course, he had been beaten. So you got the sense of a man with an extremely possessive of his throne, paranoid, and the most... I've never heard this before. Shortly before his death, when he knew that he wasn't going to live a long time, he had several thousand of the most prominent people in his kingdom gathered up and put in a stadium in Jericho. And when he died, they were supposed to be killed. The idea being that he knew nobody would mourn for him, but he wanted there to be a lot of weeping in the country when he died. So this is a guy that... It is not hard to understand the story then that comes in the Bible. It would make absolutely perfect sense that a guy like Herod, if he got warned that there was somehow, you know, somebody coming from the throne, you're gonna do away with him. So with that in mind, I mean, my goodness, I had no idea. He died in about 4 B.C. So that means that you remember the Jupiter and Saturn planet thing that we talked about, which was in the headlines of the Minneapolis paper today? All the fun we're gonna have with Jupiter and Saturn. Remember that Calus Cauvmanus, the astronomer, calculated that that may very well have been the Bethlehem star and that it went into a kind of a convergence over a period of two years on three different occasions, the last one being the most spectacular. And he calculated that if you stood at Jerusalem at this one point, it would appear to be leading you to Bethlehem. So, you know, who knows if that's true, but that's fascinating. And he also pointed out that in the literature, in other sources, again and again, people were saying Saturn and... Is it Saturn and...
Jupiter.
Saturn and Jupiter are in the Hebrew king quadrant or sphere for the astrology. So this was a big deal. So, you know, we wish that we could know more. But at any rate, in the story then, and let's just take a look. You kind of get the sense of a pretty wily guy here. Just verse 2, chapter 2. "After Jesus was born in Bethlehem and Judea, during the time of King Herod, Magi from the east came to Jerusalem and asked, 'Where is the one who's been born king of the Jews? We've seen his star in the east, and they've come to worship him.'" Of course, we've talked about that. "When King Herod heard this, he was disturbed. And all Jerusalem with him..." That would be an expression, I'm sure it's his court. "...when he called together all the chief priests and teachers of the law and asked them where the Christ was to be born, in Bethlehem and Judea they replied, 'For this is what was written: But you, Bethlehem, and the land of Judah are by no means least among the rulers of Judah; for out of you will come a ruler who will be the shepherd of my people Israel.'" "Then Herod called the Magi secretly and found out the exact time the star had appeared. He sent them to Bethlehem and said, 'Go and make careful search for the child; and as soon as you find him, report to me so that I might go and worship him.'" "After they heard the king, they went on their way, and the star noticed that they'd seen in the east went ahead of them until it stopped over the place where the child was." Well, that had to be the perception of a planet, because stars just don't do that. "And when they saw that star, they were overjoyed. And coming into the house, they saw the child with Mary. They bowed down, worshipped him. Then they opened their treasures, presented him with gifts of gold, incense, and myrrh. Does not say there were three of them, just three gifts. And having been warned in a dream not to go back to Herod, they returned to the country by another route." Now, one of the questions that is asked is, "Why does Matthew put this in, especially what happens later?" I can read it, but I think you're pretty familiar with the story. Or do you want... Should I read it, just from a detailed point of view? Yeah, okay, let me do it. Because there are several things here that may be kind of interesting to talk about a little bit. "When they had gone, an angel of the Lord appeared to Joseph in a dream. Get up, take the child and his mother to escape to Egypt. Stay there until I tell you, for Herod is going to search for the child and kill him. So he got up, took the child and his mother during the night, and left for Egypt, where he stayed until the death of Herod. And so is fulfilled with the Lord and said to the prophet, 'Out of Egypt I call my son.'" Herod died probably 4 B.C. The star was seen in like five, so it wouldn't have been a long time. When Herod realized they'd been outwitted by the Magi, he was furious. He gave orders to kill all the boys in Bethlehem and his vicinity, who were two years old and under, in accordance with the time he learned from the Magi. Then what was said, and they quote from the scripture on that. Then Herod died, and Joseph is afraid to go back to Bethlehem because there's a son of Herod on the throne, so he goes to Nazareth. So you see a difference in the story between Matthew and Luke. Luke has been living permanently in Nazareth and going to Bethlehem. This one seems to suggest that they lived in Bethlehem and flee to Nazareth. But why would Herod... Why would Matthew include this story? And there are a couple of reasons that are sometimes given. One of them is that in Matthew, Jesus is presented in some parallels to Moses. He's like the second Moses. And so, by telling this story, you're noting that just like Moses was born... He fled Egypt to get out of Egypt, to get away from a king that was afraid of there to be too much power emerging. Here, it's the other way around, but you have the flight. And then... But I think there's another reason, and this is what the author gives. And that is this. When you hear the wonder of the story as we present it at Christmas, you see the many nice things, the miraculous, the faith. It's a charming story. It's great for pageants. And we do pageants awfully well here. I still get a kick out of the camels. I'm feeling bad that I can't see it in full force, but, you know, it's really amazing. And incidentally, I don't know if you noticed, but Patsy made the camels.
They're 30 years old.
They're 30 years old, so I mean, you know. But, you know, they're really something. The reality is that Jesus was born into a very brutal world. And you see this by the Herod story on one end and his crucifixion on the other. And one of the things that that can emphasize, because the early Christians were not widely accepted. They were tolerated in most places, but they were occasionally persecuted. And so, the early Christians, up till the first 300 years, almost 300 years, lived on the margins of society. And so, you wonder if by telling this, you're really saying the Christian faith can survive in brutal places. And the sense is if it can survive here, it can survive other places. It is true, and I think we saw it big time in the 20th century, that the Christian faith sometimes thrives in the most brutal of circumstances. And I think that the story of China is one of those examples. And I know, Ralph, your grandfather was a Chinese missionary and wrote a book, and I've read that book. You know, it's fascinating, you're talking, you know, back in the early part of the 20th century. But there was an enormous number of missionaries from different countries that went to China and invested a lot. And so, by the time the Chinese revolution happened, or civil war between Chiang Kai-shek and Mao in the late 40s, you know, there had been a big investment. And then, when Mao took over, all foreign missionaries were either killed or sent scurrying. And I know that your relatives kind of went around World War II. And there was a great deal of mourning and grieving because people were saying, "What happens to the Christian faith now? This is brutal." And then, of course, China, we didn't have relations with them, and they were very isolated for many, many years. I remember in my political science class, you know, we were always guessing about what was happening in China. But after Tiananmen Square, it started opening up, and then one of the great shocks. And it was estimated that the number of Christians multiplied by 1,000 in that time. So there was actually a significant minority in China of a Christian church. They hadn't been allowed to meet. And I met one of the... I met a doctor at First Lutheran Church because we had a former Chinese missionary who tended to... You know, anytime somebody moved into Superior or Duluth to go to school, they came to our church. I remember he gave a little forum, and I found out that he had been twice jailed for witnessing to Jesus to another person, which was illegal. But he wasn't in any kind of a... You know, he wasn't... He wasn't feeling bad about this. It's just what... This is what it was. But that means that it spread underground like that. And we forget because of Western society has been built on a merger of church and state, sometimes to ill effect, for a long time. And so, we forget that Christians were marginal, and they were often in danger, or they really had to watch their back. So maybe that's one of the reasons that it's presented this way. This is a brutal culture. And Rome had its peace, but it was a peace at a very high price because it was good for a very small percentage of people. And then, it was pretty brutal for an awful lot of others. Does that make sense? I mean, we're trying to surmise, because why would you include that? Well, because it happened. But you're really saying in a very clear way. So the other thing I wanted to... I just mentioned this and stop me if... You know, we sometimes have a hard time across cultures appreciating how things might be different. And one of the things that really struck me when I read scripture is how many times there's a dream that warns somebody. Have you noticed that? Have any of you ever had a dream that seemed to have content in it that was beyond just rehearsing the "Went ahead for dinner last night"?
I don't think so.
It's not common in the United States. What I've learned, a couple of things. There's a guy named Morton Kelsey, an Episcopalian pastor and psychologist, who is puzzled by the fact that there's so many dreams in the Bible, and then even in the early Church Fathers, they're never mentioned. You know, when you look at the table of contents. And he wondered, "Why have dreams just stopped happening?" Because I do notice in other cultures, they do. And then, he went and looked at the Church Fathers, and the fact is, they hadn't disappeared. They were all over the place. But in our time of putting books together and we were in the Enlightenment, we just mentally assumed they would have no importance. And so, we just didn't talk about dreams because they're so irrational. The first person to bring them back in the West was Sigmund Freud in his psychology. But then, you began to realize that people do have dreams in which they are either illuminating to them or, in rare cases, they seem to communicate something that you can't really quite explain why you know that. And in the Bible, this is kind of assumed. And I bumped into it a little bit with my father and a librarian nurse. And tell me if this is getting too convoluted here, okay? But I just, I thought it was kind of interesting. My dad lived till 100. And he was pretty lucid up until his last, probably, three months. And then, he wasn't getting the right amount of blood to his brain, so sometimes he was having a hard time starting out what was reality. But he was pretty clear. And his Bible class had heard him refer to a time when he had been called into the ministry by a very dramatic experience as a young man. And they said, "On your 100th birthday, we'd like to hear that story." So Dad really wasn't able to write anymore in a sustained way. So what I did is I sat with him on several occasions. And he remembered it vividly. It was like one of those experiences you just... But I would push him. I'd say, "Okay, now, what happened next? What was said?" It almost took him back to what it was. And it was an experience where he was... He had a piano up on the third floor of the student house, and he was in a master's program. He'd just been rejected from the service in 1941 because he had two bad discs from an accident. And so, he was headed to his dream, which was to be a choir director and a piano player. And he's alone in the house, and all of a sudden, he has this sense that something's in the room. And initially, it's a foreboding sense. But then, he realizes that it's God, it's Christ. He said, "I couldn't see, but it still was located." And he said, "I followed this up to the third floor, where my piano was." And he said, "I almost remember standing, almost like I'm at attention, and this presence is... It was like there was a discussion." And he was afraid that he knew what it was about. It was about his life's calling. Because my dad grew up as a pastor's kid, and that was the last thing he wanted to do, okay? And the second to the last was... No, the last was... No, it was the second to the last. The last was, Ralph, to be a missionary to Africa. And I know that Tanzania is close to your heart, so...
That's right.
That's right. So, you know, different wired for different folks, okay? But at any rate, Dad had the experience of hearing a question from this person. It says, "Will you give me your life to me?" My dad was a Christian, but he said, "I heard myself saying, 'Yes, and I'll even go to Africa if you want it.'" He was not asked to go to Africa, but he had the sense that he was to go into the seminary. About a half an hour later, that presence left, never has come back again. But he had this experience of almost exhilaration and peace. And he called up my mother, who... They weren't quite engaged yet, but they were... That was their understanding, wondering what she would think. And she was a daughter of a pastor, and she was really delighted. So Dad goes down the next morning and enrolls at Augsburg Seminary. And then, he takes a very interesting circuitous route because he ends up going into youth work, gets a PhD, does the first national project on youth, and it takes him into establishing search institute and all of these things. So he was never... He just... He would have never guessed where it was gonna take him. Music then ended up his avocation. But I wrote this down, and he had told me that one time, he had been willing to share this, other than with my mother. And that was at a seminary class when somebody wanted to know about his call, and so he did. Seminary people were a little bit suspicious of this. And so, Dad decided, "I'm not gonna share this." Well, anyway, he mentioned that, and this was before when we were gonna have a little birthday party for him. And so, I read, I said, I don't know how many iterations I did of this thing. And finally, I said, "Okay, is this good?" He said, "Yes." He said, "This is as best I can say." He said, "This is, this is, this is, this is, as best I can say is exactly what happened." And then, um, his, a nurse that was taking care of him that day was hearing all of this, she was from Liberia. Her mother and, and they were Christians, and she comes out of a, a pretty ardent faith from, um, that world. And she said something very interesting to me because she said, I said, "What did you think of it?" And she said, "Oh, I, I, that was a wonderful story." She said, "You know, the big surprise for me when I came to the United States is that Americans just don't tell those stories, ever."
Complimentation.
Right. And she said, "In Africa, they're very common." And I thought, "Oh, isn't that interesting?" I mean, you know, you speak about how we receive things are affected a little bit by, I mean, we're the rational, scientific skeptic. Uh, we, good Lutherans tend to be a little bit suspicious of, uh, of the irrational. And, um, or what seems irrational. But then she, she, she spoke about how, you know, that, that just meant a lot. And of course, it was, it was huge for my dad. It was a watershed of his whole life. I mean, uh, he didn't go around talking about it, but he, he just felt like he had been given something, uh, totally by surprise, but it had, had a shaping experience for the rest of his life. Um, I think we encounter that in some of these dreams and visions that are much more common in, uh, the non-Western world than they will tend to be in, in the Western world. But Patsy, you said, nobody would believe them.
Nobody would.
See, that's the other thing I've heard. Uh, remember when people had near-death experiences, and then they were just starting to come out in the 70s? People would talk about them, but they didn't dare before because they thought they'd be crazy. And, um, and I think that we are, we don't want to be seen as, as nuts. And so we tend to be pretty, uh, but I think that there are dreams. I've had, I haven't had a dramatic one, but I've had a couple of dreams where I've said, "Why did I know this?", but it turned out to be true. Or, or a dream in which I came to understand exactly why I was in the wrong place at the wrong time, and I wished I'd had the dream sooner. That was, that was the last congregation I was called to. No, 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 not, not, not here. It wasn't an interim. The good Lord, the good Lord got me out of that. I had a heart attack and triple bypass surgery. But, um, but what my, my dream told me was, I did know that was a bad place, and I was overriding it. Because the minute my wife said, "Well, who, what's that?", and I said, "That I named the two people." I hadn't even gotten there yet. Uh, so anyway, um, but I, I think that this, I think this whole business of dreams, um, I, I take them much more seriously now than I used to. I think that, uh...
I, you know, I, I've been about dreams. I, one thing about dreams, I think that if you have a dream, that sometimes it's just your, your body's able to kind of clarify, you know, you feel like all this jump that, you know, uh, that happens during the day, and then things can kind of become clear. Because I've had that happen where I wake up and I know, "Oh, I know exactly what I need to do." Like, in terms of my mother's health, I just remember, as you're talking about your dad, that, "Oh, yes, now I know I need to do this."
Yes.
So it, it became clear.
Yes. I think, I think they do. Most dreams don't, but there are some dreams that have that, that effect. And, uh, and, um, so I, I, I think that when we get into scripture, we, uh, um, I, I guess I've come more to say, there are times when you have a, it's rare, but people do have experiences of the, uh, of the very unusual, of an angel or of something where it, and it made a big difference. And, uh, and we just tend to be kind of shy about speaking about that. Not everybody has them, but some do. And, um, now that's a, that's what I would call a real side road that I just took. So do you think I should maybe get back to Simon and Anna here? You think, you think so, Patsy?
That's ridiculous, is how they say, "That's a rabbit crack."
There is a rabbit hole, wasn't there? But, um, but you'll notice it in these biblical stories with Jesus. There are, there are either an angel or a vision or a dream that make pretty important things. Okay.
I have, I have something to say. You know, I, I've read this, you know, many times, but when you mentioned Moses, it became clear to me of the little they thought about women, girls. Because they didn't kill the girls, they killed all the boys, didn't they?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the, the women really weren't that important. They probably figured they wouldn't amount to anything.
Well, it was a patriarchal society. And you, and, 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 uh, so men were the threat. It also was a society where, uh, it's a muscle society, you think about it. You don't, you, you, you don't have computers, you don't have guns. Uh, it, it, yeah, so, so the people that would be the most dangerous from a threat point of view is who goes into the army, that sort of a thing. And I think, I think that's one of the things that we do.
Jupiter and Saturn.
Okay, let's just take a look at the, uh, the story of Anna and Simeon. And this is, this is, this is crazy. I, I, I don't think we fully understand why this is. But here was what the, here's the situation. Male children were circumcised on the eighth day. And if, if a woman had a male child, then the next 33 days were, um, even if there was an issue of blood, she was clean. But then after 40 days, she would present the child, she would be, have a purification and present the child to, uh, to the Lord if it was the firstborn son. And that's what happens here at the temple. Now, why did they do it? Um, it seems really convoluted, so I won't go much into it other than to say that the firstborn child was seen, as firstborn son was seen as dedicated to God to be a priest. And then you ended up having the golden calf, and then the priesthood was transferred to the Levites. And this is a ritual that is done where you redeem the oldest child back from being dedicated to God, which doesn't make any sense to me at all. But it is still practiced in some traditional Jewish homes. And it was practiced, has anybody here ever heard of a candle mass? Okay, that was, that's kind of the Christian derivation. But anyway, that's, that's the, um, and what you also have in this story is that experience where some people seem to know things that you can't figure out why they do. Is there such a thing as a person who is so deeply connected to the spirit that they're told things? I think there are. Uh, anyway, we've got that in this story. So, chapter 2, verse 21. "On the eighth day, when it was time to circumcise him, he was named Jesus..." Boy, do I fog up.
This glasses aren't funny. You just do that, too.
There it is.
"...the name of the angel had given to him before he was conceived. When the time came for their purification, according to the law of Moses, had been completed, Joseph and Mary took him to Jerusalem to present him to the Lord, as it is written in the law, uh, first, every firstborn male is to be consecrated to the Lord and to offer a sacrifice in keeping with what is said in the law of the Lord, a pair of doves or two young pigeons. Actually, for people that had more money, it was a lamb." So what we know right away is Mary and Joseph would, would be, would not have much money, and so for them it was, uh, two doves or, or a pigeon. And, um, and then you have this, uh, this strange, "Now there was a devout man in Jerusalem called Simeon, who was righteous and devout." I'm sorry, I got devout twice there.
Are you in Luke?
I'm in Luke.
Oh, that's why.
Yeah, were you trying to figure it out in, um, Matthew?
Yeah.
That, that is really hard. So this would be verse 25, chapter 2, in Luke. I'm sorry, I'm not very, I, I probably didn't say that clear enough. "Now there was a man in Jerusalem called Simeon, who was righteous and devout. He was waiting for the consolation of Israel, and the Holy Spirit was upon him." We do see instances where it says specifically, "The Holy Spirit is upon them," even though after the resurrection, it becomes something that is assumed to come to all baptized. But prior to that, it is selective. Um, "that he would not die before he had seen the Lord's Christ." Moved by the Spirit, he went into the temple courts. "And when the parents brought the child Jesus to do for him what was the custom of the law, Simeon took him in his arms, praised God, and saying, 'Sovereign Lord, as you have promised, you now dismiss your servant in peace; for my eyes have seen your salvation, which you have prepared in the sight of all people, a light for the revelation of the Gentiles, and for the glory of your people, Israel.' The child's father and mother marveled at what was said about him. Then Simeon blessed them and said to Mary, his mother, 'This child is destined to cause the falling and rising of many in Israel, and to be a sign that will be spoken against, so that the thoughts of many hearts will be revealed, and a sword will pierce your own soul too.' And there was a prophetess, Anna, the daughter of Fanyel, tribe of Asher. She was very old. She had lived with her husband for seven years after her marriage, and then was a widow until she was 84. She never left, I mean, she wasn't, uh, yeah. She never left the temple, but worshiped day and night, fasting and praying. Coming up to them at that very moment, she gave thanks to God and spoke about the child to all who were looking forward to the redemption of Jerusalem." Uh, just a, a very, a sense of, of recognition. Um, one interesting point that Ken Bailey makes that I think is pretty, he said that in, in like 25 or 26 instances in Luke, um, you have an illustration of a man that's always paired with a woman. And that's very unusual in that society. But it's, you know, like, for example, you have the guy that goes after the lost sheep. Right after that, the story is of the woman who loses the coin. Um, and, and you have, you have, here you have Simeon. He says more, but you also note Anna, although you don't know what she said. This is very, very common in Luke. And one of the things that it points out, which is, Jesus was unusual in how he treated women in that society. You're right, Patsy. Um, women in, in a lot of those societies didn't count for much. What's unusual is that even with the, um, the women figure prominently as supporters and being present with Jesus, they're the first ones to hear about the resurrection. And this prophecy of Simeon, that a sword shall also go through the heart of Mary, seems to suggest the crucifixion. And what we know is that Mary was present at the crucifixion, which, if you stop to think about it, there's nothing that said she should be. And I can't imagine what kind of a strength of a woman that would, because it's such a ghastly thing. Uh, it's almost as though she, she was willing to be with him and lean into the pain herself. Uh, she is often seen as a, as a model disciple in that respect. And what it says is that, is that it suggests that the death of Jesus exposes the true hearts of many people. One of the things that you may have noticed in this, in this, in the story of the crucifixion is, nobody comes out of it looking very good, except the women and Jesus. You think about that. Pilate compromises for political reasons. He knows the guy's innocent. The Pharisees are jealous, and they're just trying to get him killed. Peter says he's going to be with him if he dies, and he totally freaks out. The disciples run. I mean, you just, you have, you have the, considered the top justice system in the world, Rome, and the top religious system in the world, Israel. And they both collude to crucify the Son of God. I mean, this is an exposure of the whole world. And, um, and, and Mary is one of the people that bears it herself. So, so there's that, that really kind of haunting prediction that, uh, in addition to the, the joy and the honor of this being her child, um, there's a, there's a high cost, both to Joseph and to Mary. That make sense? And so you, you kind of have, um, so let's just take, uh, take a look at now the, kind of these, these stories. You know, we have the, we have the most significant things, which are brought out every year, you know, Emmanuel, God with us, um, uh, to save people from their sins. You have the faithfulness of Mary and Joseph. Uh, I think some of the things we've looked at in these other stories is you see, you see some of the ways in which it was maybe harder than one might know. You see Joseph and needing to probably stand against a community. His idea of, um, mercy and to follow the law is, comes really out of Isaiah and not out of Leviticus. Uh, it's, it's, and, and that's what Jesus grew up with, too, is this, this thoughtful mother, deep spiritually, uh, and a very compassionate father, although we don't hear much about him. Uh, that it's a brutal world. That, um, Jesus was, um, that Jesus came to all, which is evidenced by the fact that the angels come to shepherds that are, they're all, they're the common people, they're not considered clean. The angel comes to them clean and invites them into the peasant home to see Jesus. And you, you just have this, this, this radically different sense of, um, how God is coming into humanity in the incarnation, uh, from these stories. Are there any things that kind of popped out to you as we were looking at some of these stories that you remember or, uh, that struck you? Give you a moment to think about it, but, um... Yes?
I've, I've, like, the Old Testament has opposed to the New Testament meanings. So when you talk about brutal, I feel like, like Leviticus or, I don't know, some of those early chapters are just horrible, you know, horrible stories. And then that mark of John.
Talking about Adam giving a sword through.
Okay. Should I check it or just?
Sort of pick them as opposed to, uh,
Yeah. Yeah, you, you do, you do see, uh, a kind of a development in the Old Testament from something that's very tribal and sometimes brutal. And I get the impression, quite honestly, that when you think of all the times where warriors are looked to, I think it must have been one of those societies where you had small kingdoms, and like gangs, you, you better have some good warriors, or you're not going to live very long. I, I think it was a violent society. It just, it seems that way. But then to see the kind of, um, uh, the ministry of Jesus and the way he is willing to go into this danger, vulnerable and, uh, and humble, is, is just absolutely remarkable. Um, yeah, thanks, thanks for sharing. Was there a comment over here? Another one, very, very clear. You end up having the wise men who are gentle. You end up having the wise men who are Gentiles, and you end up having the shepherds who are Jews. And you, 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 you have very much the sense that the salvation has come for everybody, that it's going to go to everybody. And there is, there is, is that. And.
One thing that's always amazed me, is Mary pondered it in her heart. She doesn't tell anybody. I mean, if you had the Son of God, wouldn't you tell somebody? I mean, wouldn't?
Well, Patsy, to, 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 to quote your,
She was such a woman.
Hey, hey, Patsy, I gotta quote you. I gotta quote you, Patsy. Who'd have believed her?
No, but, you know, see, kids are the secret. She's pondering it in her heart. She's always pondering it in her heart.
Yeah. Well, you know, I, I think one of the things we have to realize is that when these things happen, there, a lot of them are understood more in retrospect than when they happen. I think that there are, they're amazing things, and you don't quite grasp them, because they're a lot bigger than you are. And, and that even comes through with John the Baptist. Remember when he's in prison, he sends a messenger to Jesus? And it's a very telling question. He says, "Are you the one who was to come, or shall we look for another?" And, and which means that Jesus is so different, even from what he's expecting, that he's asking the question. Jesus then quotes scripture and says, "Go and tell John that the blind see, the lame are healed," you know, et cetera. And it's kind of like, just go back to Isaiah, John, think about it. But, yeah, there's a. Okay.
I have a question. So I have a really good friend who's Catholic. We have some great talks, but, so, do Catholics believe that Mary was also without, I mean, that's what I, I, hers, like, so that's why they worship Mary?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Kind of supposed to be without sin, because then Jesus would be.
Yeah.
I mean, now you don't have to explain.
No, no, but we, Protestants and Catholics look at it very differently. I think it's, I think it's terribly clear in scripture that Mary was a very unusual woman, but she was also a human being. And, and Joseph, and, and she was not perfect. But in the Catholic Church, that developed, Mariology, kind of. And, and then, and then one of the popes, one of the popes kind of, yeah. One of my former cla, one of my former classmates I bumped into, she was, she was the only woman, and the only Catholic at Yale Divinity School, the year I was there as a first. And I remembered her, because I just, you know, and she, she then, we, we had a bishop's retreat. And this was the six Catholic bishops and the six Lutheran bishops at St. John's. And each one traded whether they, you know, they would bring a different speaker. And well, the Catholics decided to bring her. She teaches at Notre Dame, and her specialty has been Mary. And I was thinking, oh, this'll be interesting. Here we are with the Lutherans, and the Catholics, and what is she going to say? I could tell that she would back off of the kind of stuff that overdoes it with Mary. I just don't think, I just don't think a scholar can, can come up with that. But what I did appreciate about it, and my estimation for Mary has just gone a lot higher, because I think about her more now. And I realize, you know, this pondering in your heart, this taking things in, this willingness to be open, even at cost. I'd never thought of that, but it's not just, how will this be, but if I'm pregnant and I'm fifteen, and I'm not married, what happens to me, you know? But she's willing, she's willing to do this. But, but what she was talking about was her as an example of faith, as looking at the humanness of Jesus and realizing who raised him. And then looking at her faithfulness all the way through the cross, the resurrection. And, and you, you just, I, I just, I, I, I realized that, and that's really how, oh, that's how far she went. But she was just saying the value sometimes of being able to look at somebody that you look up to, and you recognize that they were remarkable people of faith, and that you can honor them in that way. And I really appreciated that. And so, I think that's where my view of Mary is, but no, I think they, I, with the Catholics went way too far. Now, some people have explained this a little bit as, as you know, in, in Spain, in South America, and Central America, Mary is really big. And, and, and if, and you can kind of see it, because the Jesus that was brought into those countries, which were really subjecting them, was a, was a kind of a stern, foreboding figure on a cross. And Mary was the, the tender one. And these are people that have suffered a lot. And oftentimes, you look for that figure that you think will, will understand you. Now, we don't, we don't emphasize Jesus that way at all. We see Jesus as someone of that compassion, but, but in those, in those traditional cultures, it suggests that that was one of the reasons. But, well, it's time to go. And nice to be with you. And we'll try one more next week, and.
Peter?
Yes?
I'm gonna add one thing here. Well, after your first part of your conversation this evening, I did look it up online, and if people do want to hear Carlos Kaufmanis talking about the Star of Bethlehem, it is available online. If you just Google his name, the second website that comes up is the Star of Bethlehem by Carlos Kaufmanis-Google Sites. And that will take you to an audio recording of his Star of Bethlehem. Yes?
How do you spell Kaufmanis?
Uh, his first name is Carlos, with a K, K-A-R-L-I-S. Kaufmanis is K-A-U-F-M-A-N-I-S.
Thanks.
So it might, might be interesting to, to listen to that. I'm gonna listen to it again, because it's been years since I heard him. But with the conjunction coming up here later in December, it might be interesting for people to, to listen to it, and then look at the star.
You've heard it, Ralph. Has anybody else heard it? Yeah, I've heard it too. And he's delightful, because he's got this wonderful Latvian accent. You know, it's like you're, he's, he's cool. I, he, and he's, it's a wonderful presentation.
Yeah.
Um, yeah. I, I hope it's a good recording, because I, I, I think I wanna see.
I said, I haven't re-listened to it, but I did pull it up, and yeah, this is the recording, so. It's, uh, during those cold winter nights up there, you can.
I hope you enjoy listening.
Oh, sorry, sorry to rub that in.
I'll close in prayer. Dear Lord God, thank you for your, your word to us, and for its mystery, and its grandeur, its challenge, its hope, its grace. And we pray for this Christmas, for all of us, especially those who would be isolated. We pray that in its own way, it will be something that we are able to perceive your incarnation in our lives. Jesus' name, amen.